Yes, Mayor, just a couple of things. We have a, it seems like a pretty significant agenda tonight, but for the most part, these are very short presentations. I will tell you that in terms of the formal docket tonight, while we have 55 items, I do want to give you a quick breakdown. Fifteen on the consent agenda, ten are public hearings and another thirty that are on the regular agenda. Half of them are basically grants for VDOT revenue sharing. So in other words, we always put our half in the game for an opportunity of fifty to be split. So I just, while it's a heavy agenda, a great deal of these items are grant related. So I just wanted to make sure we say it there before we went to the round table.
Can I just ask a quick question? Marcus and I talked about this a little bit in parade. Can you ever group our items together and vote on a block if nobody is scheduled to speak or wants to? Kind of how we do the consent items, if they can, I don't, Mr. Paul Metarian?
There is a provision that limits legislation to one topic. And so there are times when we have things that are closely enough that when I see them after the fact, they come in sequentially, we see them and we do them, that when you see them after the fact, there are some that could be combined. So that, for instance, if you had grants from the same entity for bulletproof vest and, um, uh...
No.
You could put those two together. In general...
That's a good question, yeah. I've always asked. I've always wanted to get a board in here where we could push a button and where everybody could vote. R1, boom. R2, boom. Instead of calling everybody's name, but I...
I don't think you can necessarily say, just because there's, nobody signed up, that there isn't going to be disagreement among board members.
Well, no, but we could pull it out. We could ask, like we do with consent items, to pull, pull them out if there was one that we had an issue with. I don't want to rush the city's business, but I think that sometimes, especially on a night where we're expecting a lot of public comments on other issues, that these VDOT grants and things that are...
Seems like it decreases our transparency.
We don't want to do that.
I like your idea of a board.
But there was some, Trippany said that the board wouldn't work.
I haven't looked at the push voting, but there is a requirement of each person voting and it being recorded by the clerk. And so that I haven't looked at whether electronic would suffice. If you'd like me to, I can do that.
Yeah, I would do that.
Seems like you can vote at home.
The General Assembly doesn't say...
I'm sure that the dog catcher...
If we got a schedule, we just sit off.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
The General Assembly doesn't say...
Andy, anything?
I've already done mine.
Great, Mr. Reddy?
Yeah, I'd just like to explore the possibility or even the feasibility of us building an early childhood center like we did with the football fields, because the school district is having difficulty trying to, you know, build their middle schools and high schools. And if we could maybe take the burden off of them by, you know, actually building the building and turn it over to them, I'd just like for us to explore that. Certainly would cost much more than it did when we did the football field if we gave them a very, you know, first-class early childhood center. Everybody, even when Kane was governor, he was, you know, touting early childhood education. But nobody is doing the bricks and the maul, nobody's building buildings. The one that we have, we took an elementary school and made it. And I think we just need a brand-new first-class early childhood education center. And I'd like to know what would cost then, if we could build it and turn it over to the school district.
I think as a proposition, we could.
Yeah.
The question is, it all comes down to where, you know, how...
Oh, I know, and John T. West, the John T. West Memorial Early Childhood Center over on Bolton Street.
I was waiting for that.
It's in real Russia.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
A couple of quick things. Public Hang Three is about these home businesses. I read, am I reading in that that they could not have an outside, somebody who's an employee of that business who lives outside now? So they wouldn't be employees showing up and parking cars. I guess we're doing this so they have an address and they get a business license.
You're correct, Mr. Wim. This ordinance actually carries forward a lot of the current restrictions on home occupations. What it does is it adds some additional businesses that other cities in the region allows home occupations that we have historically prohibited. It allows home occupations to be conducted in from an accessory building. So if you've got storage, you'd be able to do it in an accessory building, which we don't allow at the moment. Other than that, it is very much in keeping with what we currently have, and it just does reflect the practices of other cities.
But it really came about by not being able to get a business license because you didn't have an address if it was...
Exactly.
Not for that. I'm just, don't want thirty employees to go up to a janitorial firm, park their cars all around.
Right. No, that's not changing.
Even citizens coming in wouldn't be, yeah, wouldn't be able to come in to even be, pay attention to this, they couldn't park in the neighborhood.
No customers are...
Couple, couple other quick things, and I'll pass this down. I had a citizen who suggested we participate in recycling, back the ward. Some of y'all might have gotten that letter. I think it's something we ought to look at, other cities are doing it.
As a matter of fact, the day that we got that, Mr. Wim, I think I met with Alice and John, and they were already on it. Because I got that same letter as well, and so they responded.
Also had a request, and I know this is a little controversial, but some of the small hotel, you know, we've had, especially Tommy down in 10155, we've had trouble with people living in hotels and Christmas ornaments on the door and what have you. But I had a call, and maybe you did too, from an operator down there, was wondering if there was any way, right now, one employee can live in one. And whether for the next year, because of the economy and the homeless situation, whether we can expand that for maybe a year or twice to two, of the two employees, in other words, just one of his housekeepers or whatever, and having to put him out after thirty days and then become homeless. I guess based on the conditions, there was a pretty compelling argument to me, having also been on the other side of that, where the whole place was, you know, was...
They work for the, work for the hotel?
Right.
Well, why can't you just have him as a maintenance man and he's on site?
They can't live, but my understanding is the ordinance is one, two. Two, okay, well, two, the guy, the maintenance guy, and then one maintenance guy, but he was saying one more for this year, you know, housekeeping standard.
I think Frank has been...
I mean, I, you know...
We discussed that.
By ordinance, what the council has done historically is you, not ten years ago, issued made an absolute prohibition on allowing any residents at a hotel. And by practice, the city had been allowing two. When I met with the city attorney's office, there was concern expressed for precisely the issue you're raising, Mr. Wim. It was a concern expressed that the practice didn't conform to the ordinance. So we did just change the ordinance to reflect a practice which would allow two rooms to be used for employees.
So I guess, I guess he would wonder if we would consider one additional just for a year during this time when we had so many people that are homeless and going through a lifetime of that sort of...
We're giving them two rooms now, right?
Two rooms is what you can get.
So someone working for him is unable...
Right, but just an employee, not, not, right. In other words, this economy, I guess his argument was that, you know, I can't afford to pay him what I could, they don't have enough to live, but I can work out something if they could stay in this third unit, I guess.
Or even the second one.
The second one is, I guess he's got maintenance guy in the second one, head office guy. Just for consideration, certainly got out of hand one time, but I think the economy the way it is, you know, maybe for one year, we consider it, maybe you and I could, I mean, it really affects us more than I can, you know, talk about it.
Wouldn't you just, would rather just put three, instead of going down the road a year, then you get another, two tales, same situation? And put us in a situation where we have to make a decision, yes, no? We did this for one, we don't do it for the other?
I don't think we're doing it for, we're doing it across, we're not doing it for...
It's across the board for family members, but we're, this guy's requesting an employee.
Well, actually, what the ordinance would allow would be that you could have up to two rooms for employees, or you could use for your family. You can only do two rooms.
Maybe that will, maybe that will make him...
Okay, I, you know, I just, it was a pretty compelling argument to put people on the street after twenty-nine days or switch or whatever. That's, I guess the last thing, okay, you're going to mention the Stewart School. You know, I guess we've got complaints on the bowling place at Stewart School.
Oh, I had talked to them about that.
So that's been working through that work.
Yeah, there's a, there's an email out there, they'd like to switch the bowling place over to the Sue from Stewart School because of that.
Evidently it was not appropriate.
But the Electoral Board has been looking at it, and they couldn't make the service soon enough before the election. So they're, now that the election's over there, but they need to get going because we've got elections coming up.
Right. And last thing, without opening a tremendous can of worms, what is your timetable on making, let us know what you're, what you're thinking on the community services board?
We have at least one more meeting with the work group, which we're going to do before the end of the year, and provide us, circulate the initial draft report. So it seems that without overpromising, we should be comfortable in the January timeframe.
In the January timeframe?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Couple of Saturdays ago, I was, it was nice and I was pleased to greet the CSX volunteer group that came down, about, I think about fifty people from all over the country that came. And I hope you all noticed the plantings that are along Waterside Drive, right there on city property. And also they did the plantings at the Ballard property, Baylor property, excuse me. And they're just a fabulous group. The reason they came back to Norfolk was because they had been here two years ago and had done some plantings in the South Side. And our Parks and Rec had taken such good care of them, they were very impressed and they wanted to come back to Norfolk.
Mr. Rick and I were there that day.
Yeah, Sandra Lee.
Yeah, so I hope if any of you get a chance to see a CSX employee, it really was a terrific feel for these guys. These guys dedicate, you know, come in and spend the weekend and worked really hard. So that was really neat. It's been a long time since I've complained about Hampton Boulevard, and I know you guys were worried about it. I haven't heard anything from the commission that we set up on Hampton Boulevard. I don't know if they're still meeting. My concern is, once again, the left lane is blocked. The other day, one of my friends was going north on Hampton Boulevard, and emergency vehicle was coming down her lane because she could not get, the emergency vehicle could not get down the two right lanes on Hampton Boulevard.
The two lanes headed south?
Yeah. And so this emergency vehicle was coming down the right hand, you know what I mean, the northbound group. This, I do this every day, and every day, the left lane now again is blocked. It's not being patrolled. If we don't have the staff to make sure that we have the safety to keep that road open, then maybe we have to build a barricade down between those two lanes. I don't know. I'm hoping the commission could come up with some answers on this, but it's not working. And I'd like somebody to look at it. That's it.
And it's, it's, it may be too strong to say it's a daily occurrence, but it's only a daily occurrence. We have to, so... Anthony.
I have two things. One, and John Kief could take care of this one, over in the, off St. Julian, I noticed that we've closed one road so that they can work on the, the tracks. And so what I received was that this need a better, I guess we need to better communicate with the community when they're going to close a road in that area. And so I would appreciate that. A few businesses there as well, you know, the civic league, just let them know. And secondly, I have an issue with the consent agenda. With these, when we established these gym properties, it was twofold. It was tried to breathe life, life back in some of these fragile neighborhoods. And so when we looked at, you know, parcels that were adjacent to property owners that we would, you know, first attempt to, I mean, if not, we had sometimes gave that property to them in lieu of getting it back on the tax rolls. But I truly have a problem when we're giving developers land within the community. I think that if they want the property, developers shouldn't buy the property. I don't think that we should make a practice giving developers gym lots. They could buy the gym lots. We could twofold, we need to, just state that it gives us an opportunity to create, generate some revenue from them, twofold, because they're in a better position than the homeowner.
Which consent item is it? Anthony, which consent item is it?
I don't have my, I think...
Is it more than one, or is this...
It's two of them.
Two of them?
Yeah. It's for a profit for them and for the homeowner, that's where they live, that's their livelihood.
Yes, the two consent items in question are for Plumline Ministries. They have a option to acquire parcel from the NRHA that's adjacent to the gym lot. So they are purchasing the gym lot from us, both, in both cases.
They are purchasing?
Yes.
We're not giving them?
Great.
Okay, well, that's good.
And with the condition being that they have to exercise the option with NRHA to acquire the NRHA parcel, so that they can combine the two and then build them. If they do not exercise their option to purchase the NRHA parcel, the gym lot will revert back to the city.
Why would we, why would you put the coffin for the horse? Why not? The bigger piece is the NRHA's piece.
Not have to look back at the sizes, I think they're similar.
Yeah, that piece is twelve, twelve.
I think alone, neither is, but have to combine. So the pursuing the NRHA parcel is pointless unless you can get the gym lot. So proverbial chicken and egg, you need to do the gym lot first, if you can get that, then you can exercise the NRHA option.
How are we monitoring that? How to determine, I mean, how, who's following up on that to make sure that happens?
On the NRHA option? I would say real estate, the attorney's office, I will, with real estate in my portfolio, as well as NRHA.
Is there a timeframe, they have to exercise the option?
One...
And the persons adjacent to that property, the homeowners, that they get an opportunity to weigh, I mean, bid on the property?
I believe they were both contacted. And I believe, one, there was no response, and one wasn't interested. But I want to confirm that for you.
That's correct.
Because I got a guy that's in Central Brambleton to this day, that's where we gave a piece of property to, you know, one of the developers, and he wanted it. And we, you know, I don't want, I don't want that to happen again. So...
The only thing I have, actually, piggybacks off of what you was talking about, over in the Broad Park area and over in the Old Hydesville area in terms of notifications. I know that a lot of times, we notify citizens about things, and I just would like to make sure that in all of our neighborhoods, if there's construction that's going on, if there's something that's going to disturb the neighborhood, that we do our due diligence, we can't go back and notify folks of the Amtrak project. But there's a lot of work going on over there. There are a lot of subsequent issues because people weren't notified over there. And I just want to make sure that our citizens are properly notified when we have things going on, so that they can know what to expect. And also that when contractors are coming in, I've had several complaints about the start time of the work. Have we rectified, notified?
I believe we did.
Okay. To make sure that they're aware of what the, you know, appropriate start times are for work and, and so that citizens are not made, you know, they're, they're not put out any more than what they have to.
I have a few items. First, I wanted to, she's not here, but commend Alice Kelly. I had called her yesterday about, about fifteen street lights that went out in the Shore Drive area, and she told me that she would make sure staff went out there. Instead, she drove out there herself last night and called it into Dominion Tower to make sure it got done. And you can't ask for better customer service than that actual employee. I was just bringing it to her attention as she went out and did it. And interesting, I don't know if we're already doing this, and maybe it's a suggestion, but I've been trying to collect documents on the studies that have been done in Oceanview. And I'm sure all of us have an area of our wards that have been shredded and studied to death. And when somebody asks for these, this is how the city provides it, I'd like to see us take these and scan them and get them electronic and just put them on the internet. This is a Oceanview corridor study, that came as a printout, sometimes on eleven by seventeen big papers. This one is a draft design guidance and stormwater master plan for Oceanview back in June of two thousand and five. This one was the commercial one, and when I asked some of the economic development folks, they didn't even know this one existed. So I think that there's probably studies and documents that are out there that would help some of our task force and our civic leagues help come together, because they don't know these things exist. And if they're obsolete, then we need to get rid of them, if they're, or they need to be updated. Some of these have some good information, they just need to be updated, just shifting them to electronic form and making them easier and available to people. And it would save the city money, I think, instead of printing costs.
I agree with that.
And then you can charge people like Ellis if he wants it for paper.
I know that Frank dude went through an exercise, what, about four years ago?
Three years.
Three years ago, so we can get this together.
Yeah. Just a quick request that came in. They're doing construction on Oceanview Avenue on Chesapeake Street, and the citizens have asked if you can turn that stoplight into a blinking yellow instead of leaving it running, because there's no more intersection there while they're doing construction. It's cut down to one lane on each side, and traffic's been backing up, and I've been stuck in that as well. A request that I made about a, right when you were coming on, Marcus, was to shift our budget to online and almost have an countdown of when money's being spent, so that citizens have an opportunity to see where money's going in, in our budget. But I'd be interested to see if there's any other cities that are doing that, but just an opportunity. And that leads into my last point, is when I was called about the Civic Plaza, and I'm not opposed to it, but there were questions about how much money was being spent and that we had budgeted. And, you know, when I went back and looked at the budget, it said that we had put money in for design. And I know future budgets, we put money in for it, but we vote on our budget year to year. And there are some expenses sometimes that we have to go in, like the courthouse. But, you know, it's, that kind of information, making it available so that we know where our money's going. And I'd like to see some form of a presentation on that Civic Plaza and what it, why are we spending four point nine million dollars? I think we need to be educated on that. And if it's significant, if we have to do it, why are we doing it? What are the things are with it? I didn't see that in the courthouse presentation that was given to us. And so it'd be nice to have that information, so that when we get a call from a reporter, we can...
Sure.
Talk about it a little bit better.
Sure.
Can I just ask something? I'm curious about this. Andy, Tommy, Paul were called. Who else was called about it? Were you called, Paul?
No.
Barkley? I just was curious. Angela, you were not?
You're not on speed dial.
Yeah. I didn't say the PR.
Some of us just answered the phone.
Yeah. Just, just a couple of small things. The old Dominion Norfolk State game, we're going to have big crowds. It looks like the weather's going to be ideal. I just, you know, I think the city ought to be prepared, you know, I mean, for a big crowd around Foreman Field, both before and after the game, to manage, you know, large groups of people walking across streets and stuff like that, and even after the ballgame. We have a good history of that, but I just think you need to be ready for, for big crowds.
We had an excellent meeting yesterday morning with ODU and NSU Stan for their third purpose.
I was at a meeting, Paul, and I was informed that it's going to be the mayor's cook.
No, that's not, that's...
Tell them to squat, squat, yeah, to them, need to squat, yeah. They did the occupant off.
No peppers, right?
Yeah.
Secondly, I haven't seen us planting any new trees. I mean, the planting season, there's like two planting seasons, John?
They plant, they're out there.
We can't take care of what we got.
They planted out there by Harbor, I mean, by Harbor Park, they just planted a whole bunch of trees over there.
Okay, well, I was always told October was the planting season. I mean, I see lots of pits where trees have not been planted. I know we lost some trees in a tough, you know, with, period of time. I mean, all over downtown.
I'm going to give you an update of what we've done.
Is it still planting season, though? Can we still, is it too late?
We're coming into it.
You're coming into it, yeah, okay.
We really need another hard fall.
They started November fifteenth, some planting, they're going along, like, so... Okay. Well, if we give you some locations, John, you're holding on to two conversations. If we give you some locations, you'll try to address that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's some again, I noticed, on Twenty-First Street. And this, this is really a couple of small things. For some reason, in front of the old supermarket in downtown, where Harbor Heights is, we've blocked the sidewalk for, for some outfit that was doing repairs to, I think, you know, something to do with the building. And we've, we've had it blocked off for, it seems like, a couple of months now.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, and nobody's working out there. Somebody, they just left their stuff and walked away. But, I mean, this, the city's right of way. The city, I mean, our citizens should not have to cross the street there, or, you know, or walk out in the street. I can understand a couple of weeks, but this has gone on for a couple of months?
I'll check it out.
When we redid the intersection at Bush and Brambleton, you know, which was a good move, they'd been in our plan for a long time to do that. If you, now, if you walk back to the next intersection, I think it is, it's like Bush and Virginia Beach Boulevard, and then there's Bush and Llewellyn. Those lights just need to be synchronized. I mean, you can, we wanted to redistribute traffic more evenly between, you know, to move it over to Bush and then, and, you know, leave some on, I guess, Duke down there. But if somebody could just come in there and tweak the signals so you don't have to, as you're heading south, you don't stop for the full cycle of all three lights, and that would be simple. That's all, that's all I got.
Well, then, on the agenda next, we have an occupied Norfolk update.
I'm going to give you a little bit of a background, Paul, from it. I think maybe we all have such a couple of different points of view and different places in our knowledge. I want to let you know that as Occupied Norfolk started in Norfolk, the staff was meeting with the group of representatives from Occupied Norfolk. The first meeting was the end of September. Those meetings, actually, there were ten of them through, then the camping was ended and...
First meeting was when?
September the twenty-eighth, I think it was. And those groups, those meetings, I attended all of the ones towards the end. I did attend the first couple of them. The city attorney's office was there, city manager's office was there, special events office was there, and the police chief was there, so, and some police officers who were working with the Occupied Norfolk people. So we had a very good dialogue and conversation, and during those meetings, we usually talked about what issues were occurring, being both on the Occupied Norfolk people, they asked if they could get access to water, for example. And then on the, in the city, if we had any issues, if the police had any issues about blocking sidewalks and that sort of thing, we just talked through those types of issues in those meetings. They were very cordial, the group is a very open group, the people that came and met with us. And at the end of each of those meetings, we did not make decisions in those meetings. We took in information from each other, and, but no decisions were made. During those meetings, the Occupied Norfolk representatives also asked the city, or told the city, what their request was going to be for future permits, for the next permit. And so we would know when they were going to request and where they wanted to be doing their assemblies and their parades. So there was a continuous conversation through... parades. So there was a continuous conversation through all of that time. As you know, on the, November the tenth, we discontinued the camping permit. The camping permit ran out on December the tenth. At that point in time, they were given three hours notice to, from six to nine AM in the morning. They were asked, they were told that their camping permit was not going to be renewed, and to please remove their things from the park. Most of this has been in the paper. I don't need to go through all the details, but at that time, most of them, they did leave the park. And then six members of Occupy Norfolk were arrested when they tried to re-enter the park. Then, when nine o'clock came, the belongings that remained in the park that had not been moved out were moved by the public works staff to our towing, our towing area, where they could be locked up so that they would be safe. And that is a twenty-four seven operation so that people could go and pick up their belongings anytime of the day or night. Is there a charge to them for that? There was no charge to them. And we told them that their belongings would be there at no charge, locked up safely and watched for thirty days.
Did they have to prove it was theirs as described in some of the emails?
I don't believe they had proof that it was theirs. They do, if they came to get their belongings, they did sign their name and sign out what they were taking from the, from the locker, from the area. So we do know, there was, in the time period between then and now, seven people have gone to the area and taken their belongings and signed out, signed out what their belongings are, and moved them out. There was a refrigerator at the site that is still at the towing yard. And it was not plugged into the site, but it was at the site. And there are belongings still remaining there. They have not been picked up yet. On November the tenth, in the evening, a person tried to enter the park after sunset, and that person was also, well, actually, they were taken to the magistrate because they refused to sign the summons, and a magistrate summons was issued. On that same day, on November the tenth, we really wanted to recognize their First Amendment rights to assemble and to parade or to march. And so we reissued a permit to them for assembling and parading. And that permit was until November the twenty-first at two PM. We always try to maintain their right of assembly and their right to First Amendment free speech. And they have actually asked us for different permits to move their location of assembly and their location of parading. And we have pretty much, in almost all instances, issued the permit from where they requested. In some cases where there were conflicts with activities that were happening, like at Town Point Park, we just moved them the street over, we put them so that they would not be interfering with that festival, festival that we had. There's been some very minor things that have happened right around that time period, where some signs and some tents ended up in public rights away and that sort of thing, but very, very minor. We basically have been working with the group very closely and even had a meeting with them on November fifteenth, which was that Tuesday after the tenth. Usually at these weekly meetings, we have the meeting and then decide when our next meeting is going to be. And usually, it's the next week we decide. At that meeting on the fifteenth, which we did hold, we had scheduled it earlier, they decided not to schedule the next meeting, the meeting. They meet in general assembly, my understanding, and I can be corrected if I'm off. They meet in general assembly at least once a day in the evenings. They're continuing to meet in general assembly now in the evening. They have a meeting outside, and I think most of the time now they're meeting inside because the weather has gotten a little bit more stiff. And they, although I have not watched it, they stream their meeting online, so you can actually watch and see, you know, what's being discussed in their general assembly meeting. There was talk about the Grand Illumination, and they did hand out pamphlets at the Grand Illumination. And from those in the city who I've talked to, we are unaware of any parades or marches that they've been doing recently. Their permit did expire on the twenty-first, and they have not asked for another parade or assembly permit. So we just, we haven't actually had any discussions with them, and they did not submit any request for a permit. They are expected to come this evening and speak. I don't know what all the issues are gonna be this evening. I think they are going to be requesting to meet with the manager and the mayor, and would like to resume camping. And we're concerned about what happened on the tenth and how quickly they were asked to about. And that's my understanding of what their concerns are at this time and what they may be expressing to you. And I know you have talked with various ones of them, so you may actually know other comments that they're gonna make. We've actually had a very, it's actually been a very good discussion with the group. Generally, it's the same three people who've been coming. The group, actually, it's a couple, three members came actually the day of the tenth and asked to speak. And so we sat down and talked with them about what was going on at noon. So we know each other, and, you know, there has been a dialogue going on throughout all the Occupy Norfolk, the time, you know, from September till now. I can answer questions if you have them. I find you the answers.
Thank you.
Right.
I know we've been to a couple of committees, but this is another legislative update. It's more so related to our signature piece of legislation as well as a calendar.
Good evening, council. Pat's had a hard copy of the staff's proposed timeline for bringing our legislative priorities package for the two thousand and twelve General Assembly session to council's formal adoption. After council's approval, on Tuesday, November eighth, we transmitted the city's draft General Assembly two thousand and twelve legislative priorities package to our General Assembly delegation, since Norfolk Public Schools. We sent it to all of our neighboring Hampton Roads communities, and immediately followed up requesting a face-to-face meeting with all of our General Assembly delegation. And those meetings have been scheduled, a large majority of them to occur within the next three weeks. So I'll be going to each of our General Assembly members' offices to more thoroughly discuss the council's draft priority package and get feedback on the balance of our priority statements, our legislative requests, our statements of opposition, and our statements of support. So far, the preliminary discussions with our delegation members and their staffs have been very positive about the city's package. I would say that a question has come up with regard to the city's draft statement on uranium mining moratorium. As you know, as we have captured in the current draft package, we are saying that we don't support the lifting of the moratorium until studies convincingly demonstrate that uranium mining can be done safely. Our neighbor city, Virginia Beach, as well as the Hampton Roads Planning District, have passed resolutions within their legislative packages that are more specifically saying that the General Assembly should maintain the moratorium on uranium mining or consideration of such till at least the two thousand and thirteen General Assembly session. My counterpart, Virginia Beach, has said that the Virginia Beach Council would appreciate the Norfolk Council's support and pushing for just a hold on taking any action on lifting in a moratorium or consideration of any kind of moratorium. Because quite frankly, we still haven't seen the report that's due, and there just really isn't adequate time to go through.
Isn't that the smart thing to do?
Yes, sir, we think that's...
Why would we be less than...
Just wanted to make sure that that was okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, we actually have more at stake than anybody in this. We have the largest water system, I think, in the Commonwealth. We've got about nine hundred thousand people who drink from water from our system every day. I mean, nobody has more at stake here than we do, including the military. The US Navy drinks, all of their water comes from us. You know, portions of three others, all of Virginia Beach, all of Norfolk, portions of Portsmouth and Chesapeake, some in Western Diver Water. I mean, this is something we ought to be following like, you know, like a...
Okay. We throw the coal plant on there while you're at it, too. That's another issue that we could consider, sir. We think that asking for a hold on any action at the General Assembly till two thousand and thirteen seems to be a more reasonable request. It seems to be getting some traction, whereas previous efforts to get them to, to hold efforts really hasn't been as successful. So with the region taking the stance at the PDC level with Virginia Beach, as well as their efforts to coalesce the other member localities directly impacted, we'll move forward to incorporate that new discussion. Unfortunately, the bad news is, the dates that we have been trying to schedule our dinner with the General Assembly delegation just aren't working. And I've asked for a new date from the manager's office and the mayor's office. We're going to try our best to get December twelfth, that's a Monday, as a night for council to meet with the General Assembly delegation. We're proposing to meet at the Half Moon Cruise Terminal as our location for this dinner meeting, which will take approximately an hour and a half to two hours just to kind of have a more candid and specific conversation with the delegation, not only about the city's priority package, but also topics relevant to this General Assembly session, including transportation and what we should be doing specifically to best minimize those cuts that we know are coming that disproportionately impact the city over and above what other cities would experience, just for us being an urban community. So we'll get back, council, with the December twelfth as quickly as we can. As you can see on the proposed timeline, it's been adjusted to incorporate the dinner occurring sometime between December twelfth and December sixteenth. That would push us to, the council actually adopting our package at the Tuesday, January tenth meeting. Session starts at the General Assembly on Wednesday, the eleventh, so we start within time. I would like to say that the concern about bringing the package forward really had more to do, or at least earlier, had more to do with the prefile deadline. However, this year, our only one policy, our only one request would be more in the nature of a budget amendment, so it gives us about another two weeks and doesn't have a prefile deadline requirement that a legislative bill would have. I'd also like to say, council, without naming specific names, our request, which you can find on the back of the handout that you have, has been very favorably received by a couple different members of our delegation. Staff feels very comfortable in saying that it appears that we will have a patron to carry our sea level rise study request. Also, I wanted to let you know that staff spent a significant amount of time on the phone with the Virginia Institute of Marine Science. They are the organization that our potential patrons have identified as being the entity that would be best in position to take a real honest look at a comprehensive sea level rise study, not specific just to Norfolk, but all of Virginia's coastal communities. ODU would be involved, and this bill would be advanced through the Higher Education Subcommittee on the Senate and House. And I have to say, we've made some great work. As a matter of fact, as we speak, VEMS is in the process of actually scoping out with specificity what the study would require, as well as the elements that would be covered in the amount of timeframe that we have to get this thing underway. Essentially, to boil it down to its practical application, we're asking the state to fund this study and to have VEMS actually conduct it with partnership with Old Dominion University, DMAS, and a few other entities that have a resource of information. The only problem is there's just a disparate amount of information out there. There isn't, it isn't consolidated and coordinated in a comprehensive way. And so the first phase of this study would really be to pull all that together for us and let us know that the state, in fact, recognizes that we do have significant sea level rise concerns moving into the future. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Can we move to the veterinary hospital?
Sure.
Make sure we get that in.
Okay.
Greg is here.
Greg, you're up.
Good evening, members of council and Mr. Mayor. I'm here tonight to review or describe our plan for a new animal hospital at the zoo and an animal wellness campus. And the campus is a state-of-the-art facility that includes the veterinary hospital and a kitchen commissary. It's crucial to our next accreditation inspection, which is in two thousand and thirteen. And it's a one-of-a-kind learning experience for adults and childrens, academics, and students studying animal medicine. The hospital is an eight thousand square foot facility. I don't have the name here. It is an eight thousand square foot facility. I built the same size hospital at my last zoo. It contains a hospital or medical area, also a holding and quarantine facility. And attached to this facility is a twenty-five hundred square foot kitchen or commissary. All right, sorry about that. It's a site plan. The great thing about the site plan, it doesn't require any demolition of any existing buildings, and it falls right in between our New Asia exhibit in the bottom left-hand corner and the Africa exhibit in the upper right-hand corner. So it offers us a really good flow into the facility from outside of the zoo property when we receive new animals, and then also receiving any patients from any of the exhibits inside of the zoo. And our visitor pathway also just extends, easily extends from our event field, like the rest of our exhibits, into the center of the wellness campus.
Is that the best place for it, Greg?
Is that the way?
I mean, we, I think in the past, we talked about maybe putting this hospital on the, like, on the perimeter.
It does join the perimeter fence line right behind the Ernie Morgan Center, where we already have a service road that goes to our restaurant.
Okay.
Indoor space programming for the hospital features an apartment for interns and academics, view-in-to-windows into our surgery treatment, veterinary scrub room, and a laboratory. The exterior is made of recycled materials, so is the brickwork. There's natural lighting throughout the facility, and it's, will contain state-of-the-art equipment and technologies. The commissary feature also has view-in-windows into the kitchen, into a dishwashing room, and also an animal enrichment area. Since everyone's kind of a foodie nowadays, food shows are so popular. I know that this will be very popular. Our colleagues that review the facility with us include veterinarians from around the country and nutritionists, so they, we've got nutritionists come down from the National Zoo who worked in our dirty end, clean-out building program, or space programming for this commissary. And it also, really, the teaching points of the facility are good nutrition, exercise, and outdoor activity is good for animals, good for you. So I think the teaching component will be very popular, especially when we get to the outside campus.
So you could get Paula Dean down here?
It's a forty-five-foot wide viewing window, so it's got a big kitchen there. But on the left side of the facility, you can see the yellow portion is our medical area. The orange facility is quarantine and holding. And then the bottom portion of the L there, the gray area, is the commissary. And right out front of that, in the center of the L, is our courtyard, where you can view into the yellow area, into those large surgery treatment rooms, and then the scrub room on the side of that. And then to your right into the kitchen, you can view into the, where the diets are prepared, and then an animal enrichment room, and then the kitchen. Something that's exciting for me is that the window, the viewing windows really do go down to the ground, so countertop is countertop, and we can label everything from the ceiling down. So it's really showing kids where the hot and water pipes are, where the drains go, and then all of the things that are going on top of the counter, and then all the way to the back.
Greg, I don't know anything about horses, but somebody has said to me when they read this article, that there's a large horse force population here, that it doesn't really have a, you know, a large surgical facility.
Oh, right.
I mean, would you be able to do things here for...
We would, but the zoo grounds is pretty much considered a quarantine facility, but we could probably figure out something.
I mean, there might be money out there for something.
Right. There could be. The outdoor portion of the campus, I think, is gonna be a really remarkable component, because as you walk up to the veterinary hospital, there will be grow vegetables or crops, vineyards and orchard we have designed into the plan, playground. There will be elevated courtyard seating that will be shaded, so you can view into those... that will be shaded, so you can view into those windows. Then we have an outdoor education arena where we deliver education programming. And then Eco Gardens, which we do so well in the zoo now, will also be a part of this campus. And this gives you a pretty good idea of some of the pictures in the bottom left. You can see how those cropped vegetables are grown in the orchards in the second, and then some vine vegetable growth on the right. I think those are a lot of things that kids don't see nowadays that we probably all saw maybe 20 years ago or so. So I think as you walk up to the facility, you can see in the center there, shaped like an L. You enter that courtyard, our train goes right between those two hedges you see. So I think there's a great learning opportunity throughout the entire campus. And then the parking, we're trying to get more parking out of the public space in front of the zoo and in Lafayette Park. We've opened up about 20 parking spaces that are permeable surfaces. And the exterior of the building, as I said, is recycled material. So there's a lot of really unique components to this facility that'll demonstrate not only all the educational value to our visitors, but also to construction ideas and projects and how you can use these materials and how surfaces can be made to be more environmentally friendly.
Your vineyard, what you doing in your vineyard? Tomatoes?
I know they've talked about grapes so far, but I'm sure we'll do some sort of whole beans. But then I think it'll be a lot of vegetables and herb gardens.
Did you say grapes?
Carnivorous, carnivorous plant garden. Our timeline for the project...
I don't think we would pick good wine here.
Is to, we're in the public phase of our capital campaign to raise the funds on the Zoo Society side. We're hoping to go to construction bid February or March, have our groundbreaking in March, and then begin construction somewhere between March and May with a grand opening for spring 2013. And this project was brought in-house on the books in 2003 when we had our inspection for accreditation. And then again, in 2005, when we had, I know it was on our books in the CIP plan in 2005, 2006. And then in 2008, it was brought up at our inspection that we need to expand our medical facilities along with our collection. This is a picture.
Are the two tied together? The larger the animal services or the larger the number of animals?
The larger facility we would need, that's right. And this is a picture of the building. As you would walk upon at the top picture, that whole lighter area of yellow is actually viewing windows into the main treatment and surgery rooms in the hospital. The smaller windows on the left are kind of sneak peeks, kind of teaser views into our laboratory, where we do blood chemistries and people exams and all those sorts of things. Between the two facilities, where it turns gray right in the middle of the L there, that's actually a chalkboard surface, so we can teach educational programming from there, and you can draw on that board, for example. I think it's very interactive. And then as you turn the corner, the L, the bottom picture is the viewing into the kitchen. And those smaller windows, all the way to the right, view into the animal enrichment rooms, where our keepers design and create kind of the toys and enrichment opportunities for our animals. And all the way down is our kitchen. So it'll be an industrial-type kitchen, like a restaurant-style kitchen that they can actually view into there. Does anybody have any questions?
What kind of current hospital do we have?
We have a smaller hospital that is really the first ground space of our animal services department. So it's about a 1,200-square-foot indoor area. And then we have a separate holding facility at the other end of the zoo.
This is something that was required of us by the Accreditation Society, right?
That's right.
We had to have this big animal hospital. But I think it's a great project. Money's already been budgeted for it. I know you're just trying to add to it by raising additional funds, which I'm glad you're doing. You can bid this thing in segments, right?
Into segments.
Like the outdoor landscaping, all of that can be led...
Right.
Under a second contract if you have to.
And those...
I just think, I've urged them to move forward, and I urged the manager to move forward, because we are going to get such a good bid this time, even by February, Mr. Wynn, don't you think? We'll get a good bid for a project like this that, you know, if we can move forward, we might save some money.
Marcus and I had a very brief conversation about when the city funds buildings like this, that they, there should be something in the contract that a certain amount of the employees have to be hired from within the city. This would include the courthouse and any future projects. And I would like to have that conversation at some point, that we should be employing our citizens in this. And also, eventually, a living wage clause, that when we are hiring them, that these contractors... I mean, a building like this would be a good example of our, places start as a smaller building, that show that we can do this and that we can find a builder, a developer in this area that would be willing to do that. Maybe people will disagree with me, but I think we should be giving that money back to our citizens in that way.
You know, I think in the early '90s, the General Assembly prevented us from hiring.
Richmond's doing it.
Yeah, maybe a misunderstanding.
You're right, the General Assembly prohibits the city from making residency a requirement of city employment, except for at the very high management levels. But it's a good idea to explore that Cleveland tried it with a road project, and it was of magnitude that it was challenged under the Commerce Clause. So that we can analyze it. But you're talking about two different things now. You're talking about trying to require them to have a wage level, you're describing as a living wage.
Right.
And so that, you know, Virginia is a right-to-work state. And I think that a lot of national companies find that they could do construction less here. And so that, I don't know that those aren't competing goals to try to help our citizens get employment. And at the same time, if we're putting it... But there are things to consider. You have to consider the Commerce Clause as well. And I think you might want us to get back to you that we've got some very excellent local construction companies, WM, Jordan, Ballard, there's a law on this. I'm not going to try to name them all now. You're familiar with them. And I don't know what something like that does on our price or our ability to have our citizens work for companies that are working regionally. So that, it's got a lot of questions with it. The legal piece is one part of it, so that...
Well, I understand where you're coming from, but when there's other cities in Virginia that are doing this, then obviously, there's laws out there that are allowing them to do that. Richmond's doing this, Alexandria's doing it. Maybe the laws changed in the last year or so, because they change all the time in Virginia. But it's something that we should be looking at, especially if we're going to be investing all this money in a courthouse, into the library, into the zoo, wherever we're spending this money. Because when you start looking at some of these construction jobs and where they're hiring from, these are not, these are not our citizens that they're hiring in Norfolk. And they're bringing them in from out of state. Light rail, we saw in the last example.
There are really two ways to look at it. And I agree with you, to hire local companies. You're saying hire local companies, which I'm all about. Or you say require the local companies to hire Norfolk citizens.
They don't have to be 100%, that there can be...
It's hard to enforce who they hire, and they come and they go, and they don't perform. You know, that's really kind of...
They don't have to be Norfolk citizens, but it should be...
I'm all about it from the regions area.
Well, so, Tommy, you're not saying that they should be Norfolkians. You're saying they should be regional. Because you originally had said they should come from Norfolk.
Right.
So it's not Norfolk.
No, I'm sorry.
Because we tried this, you know, at Park Place, trying to limit the people with this new Y to hire citizens. And we were told that we couldn't do that.
Well, and if it's not something, then we got a legislative package next year. I mean, it could take three or four years to make something like that happen. We're just putting a lot of money in, and I hate to see that money.
Is there an opportunity, because of the increase in size of this facility, for us to accommodate other city zoos that maybe do have sick animals and maybe need the facility that we provide exactly? And then, for fee, of course. But is there an opportunity for that? I mean, really, we're not just going to give it away. But is there an opportunity for that?
We can look at that. We do take various data of animals occasionally. We have a couple of those alligators, was that last one? We can see how we can help with that. Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Okay. We get a good bid. We'd like to slip one more in, because there is an item into the formal, on formal docket tonight, which would be the resolution that Jim's going to make in a quick presentation.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, Mr. James, thank you for the opportunity to present on the mitigation plan update. It's important to emphasize the word "update", because this is a plan that we've had since 2006. Where required, per the Disaster Mitigation Act... Thank you. ...of 2000, every locality has to have a natural hazard mitigation plan in order to be eligible for FEMA mitigation grant funds. Again, we've done it in 2006. We have to do it every five years, so this is our fifth year, and this is our update. So the purpose of this plan is to have an updated assessment of the hazards which threaten our community. We're looking at the frequency and the impact and our vulnerabilities, along with our goals and objectives on how we're going to mitigate those things that we can otherwise eliminate altogether. It also keeps us in good standing with the National Flood Insurance's Community Rating System. For those who may not be familiar with the CRS, it is a reward for going above and beyond the minimal standards for the flood insurance program, which currently, at a rating of nine, gives our citizens who have flood insurance a 5% decrease or have 5% savings in their agreement. And also, I mentioned the natural hazard mitigation grant eligibility. And like Mr. James said, you'll be asked to adopt this later on this evening. The regional hazards that we face, again, we're looking at it from a regional perspective. There are some hazards here which affect us and some that don't. And Lee from Salters Creek Consulting did an excellent job, and it was an excellent regional exercise on developing the plan reflective of all of our hazards, because the climatology doesn't change within the region, but our goals and objectives do. So a primary component of the plan is a true assessment of these hazards. And then there are specific goals and objectives and strategies for each locality. The partners that we're in this plan with are ourselves, Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Isle of Wight. There's a number of reasons why we did this. Again, the climatology doesn't change within our region. Also, the economy's a scale. We were able to, we were able to get grant funds collectively, and we paid a lot less for, and got more bang for our buck going in from a regional perspective. A lot of folks ask why Chesapeake is not part of this plan. They actually have their own. They've done it independently. And we see in the future an opportunity for them to come onboard with us. It was a team effort at the local level. You can see the grants management, planning, public works, public utilities, even some of our community partners, Skip Styles, a Wetlands Watch, and a Citizen Input. There was opportunities through public meetings, through online surveys and the like, to really make this an inclusive planning process, because everyone really has a role in mitigation planning. Not just locally, but here's a snapshot of some of the regional partners as well. As you can see, it was an excellent example of a public-private partnership. And with all this input, we've got a lot more data that will support a lot of initiatives in our CIP, the flooding plans and the like. So all these folks are involved in our mitigation planning, and they're engaged, and they want to be part of continued planning processes. The project timeline, as you can see, we started in 2006, and it's been a year-long process. Again, we've had planning meetings locally, regionally. We've had public meetings and with the survey as well. And we are at the point now, at November 15th, the state has approved our plan, FEMA has approved our plan. And now, as soon as we adopt it, it'll be official, and we'll continue our eligibility for, again, FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Funds. What's next? Adoption, and then we go to work.